Oh, yes.
No, we're not doing anything here.
That's kind of our time to meet and have some work done. We get down on nineteen. First thing we're going to do is swear certified city of Edmonds.
Huh? Thanks the crowd. Right now, we can do this three different ways. I can say the whole thing, and you all can read it the same way I did. I'm sorry for the in between, you need to repeat it after. You need to read it after. You want me to tweet it out? All right, I'm going to use this app. We'll print this out, and then you all sign it. Raise your right hand. Aye, negative. A citizen of Barrow County, state of Georgia, and hereby solemnly swear and affirm that I will truly, well, and faithfully discharge and be the effective board member of the city and state of Georgia, and that I will support and defend the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia, the United States of America, and that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the charter and ordinances of the city and state. And furthermore, solemnly swear and affirm that I am not the holder of any account of foreign public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state which by the laws of the state of Georgia I am prohibiting and from holding, and that I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. So help me God, be so sweet. One in.
Let me say to the committee, anytime you need anything, looking at, whatever, gets over. Okay, we have a thank you call. Time to meet November fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. Should have the minutes left.
How much should be approved minutes?
Okay, yeah, motion of amendment, second behalf, only three.
We have a council meeting November twenty, two thousand eighteen.
Any questions on that, on the council meeting, November twentieth, two thousand eighteen?
Make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve, half second. Please second call my favor.
Okay, now this time we're going to open up with the closing hearing. The rezoned map parcel S zero two dash zero seven zero from R four to R one. Mr. Jones is trying to rezonate this parcel in order to file a home state so he can save taxes on his property. We also have a question. He can't drive a night, so he's not here.
Okay, we have any questions on it?
Hi, of course, what's the difference between R four and R one?
R one is for residential.
Okay, R four is for manufacturer home.
Oh.
And then R one is for the regular residential. R four, you can put a manufacturer home on the property. So surrounding parcels around the R four is all R ones. So the recommendation was to rezonate from here, the R four to R one, so it'd be all the same zoning.
He doesn't have one. Or your home.
Is there a mobile home in the property now?
He is, he's living on it.
He doesn't live anymore, yeah. I got two there.
Yeah, he's got two of them, two copies together next to each other. So he's wanting to rezonate and then combine, cut out a small lot for the one that he's renting out.
Well, he's, he's going to split them up.
Well, what it is, he could not have it, partially had. He could not get home state exemption and all the benefits. So he spent the money to rezonate and re-survey to.
Divide it.
Divide it, so his is cheaper, still not pay the same kind of money for other copies. It was a county agency.
Any more questions?
How much of motion are we?
I'll work over the next item, we can close the hearing.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay, we're going to close the hearing. Anybody has any questions? We're going to move on to O business. Second reading, rezoned map parcel S P zero two dash zero seven zero from R four to R one. This is where you make the vote.
I make the motion that we accept the rezoning.
Okay, we have a motion to accept, we have a second.
I'll second it.
There is a second call in favor.
Uh, new business. Item A, listen, we need to remove Michelle Emery from all city bank accounts because she's no longer employed here.
I make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. I appear as second behalf, only favor.
Uh, item B, it's employees Christmas gift cards. In the past, we have provided all employees a verified holiday gift card for the Christmas.
Okay. Do we need a third?
We need, yeah, we need a motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve it. All the gift cards, all you want.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion to second, all in favor. Aye. Okay. Okay.
Next item is the N S three zone map parcel XX one one seven dash zero one seven and XX one one five dash zero six zero from A G to C S O R one zoning. I don't believe they're here tonight.
That's what Donna said, I think we spoke of.
Yes.
That's going to be on hold. Yeah, that's how I'm going to.
I make the motion to recede it.
Ten half second there.
A motion, like, favor. Second behalf, maybe, all in favor.
And then the last item on a new business is the reporting of the home rule amendments provision to the city's charter.
There are two home rule matters, or two charter matters you all consider tonight. And I'm going to do the easiest ones first, and we'll talk about the second one. First one, the one that we can do by home rule is the change the charter to allow ordinances to be adopted on the same night they're ready to do so long, and everybody's here, and everybody's in agreement. That requires a couple of applications to one of the sections of our charter, the addition of additional language. Because of the nature of this ordinance, I'm like, what are we going to do? I'm going to, I'm going to read through this so that it's properly in the record and explain to you what needs to happen from there. Provided that's something that the council wants to be interhanded. That's something that I understood from the general consensus to do this, to give yourselves the option to do that. I'm talking about that. All right. So the requirement, it's a home rule ordinance to amend section two point one three of the charter to add a new section, two point one three, one five, to delete the requirement for two readings of an ordinance before adoption. To allow one reading of an ordinance before adoption, provide for restrictions, and repeal conflicting ordinances. The changes would have to be, section two point one three of your charter would have to be amended to delete the last clause of the third sentence, which reads, quote, including two readings in the case of an ordinance, close quote. You would also have to delete from section two point one three, language from the fourth sentence, which reads, quote, before being adopted shall be read at two meetings, not less than one week apart, and, close quote. And then the following language would have to be added to the charter as section two point one three, point one five. Said an ordinance may be introduced by any member of the council and be read at a regular or special meeting of the city council. This reading may be accomplished by the reading of the caption. Ordinances shall be considered and adopted or rejected by the city council according to the rules and shall establish, except for emergency ordinances provided in section two point one three. Either the mayor, any council member, or council members may request consideration of any proposed ordinance, be delayed until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the governing authority. Said request need not be accompanied by any explanation or reason. It shall automatically be delayed until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the governing authority, without the necessity of said delay being approved or voted on by the governing authority. The delay of said consideration shall not be further postponed, except by vote of the governing authority. If any of the mayor or council members are absent, or if any changes other than the correction of clerical errors are proposed, an ordinance may not be adopted on the same day it was first introduced, except for emergency ordinances provided in section two point one three. Upon introduction of any ordinance, the clerk shall, as soon as reasonable, distribute a copy to the mayor or to the clerk. Each council member shall file a reasonable number of copies in the office of the clerk and at such other public places that the city council may designate. Now, if you all want to adopt that as part of your charter, provisions for home rule amendment ordinance are a little bit different. You actually have to approve and adopt it tonight, and it will need to be approved and adopted a second time at your regular meeting in January. It will also need to be advertised in the legal order three times between now and then. So if you all wish to do this, the appropriate motion, the emotion to approve, and that approval would include direction to the city clerk to advertise this before your next regularly scheduled meeting in January.
If a member of the council objects, just one, if it would require a second reading?
Yes. Yep. They go back to the second reading.
So that's the first option, that's not the easy.
Of the things we're going to talk about tonight, this one, this is the one you can do by home rule. And this is, this is, that's the one that we talked about, the last one, last one. This doesn't have anything to do with changing authority of anybody, anything like that. This is simply to deal with the way you all adopt it.
And if need be, that can be passed at the same time.
That's correct.
If everybody's in agreement.
Everybody's here, and everybody's in agreement.
Okay.
And typically, you'd have a work session.
Right.
Where discussion, and then you'd have a weekend to consider it. And then.
Right.
And then you could vote on it the next time.
What's my reason now? We can't adopt and approve an amendment to your charter in the same night.
No, no. What, I'm sorry, the, what this, the, to make, to make an amendment to your charter requires us to go through this process of two readings, whether or not you have this, this provision in place or not. This change to your charter will simply allow you to adopt other kinds of ordinances, the code amendments, anything like that, by just doing it in a single night, instead of having to do it in two meetings, the way we do now. For instance, when we were dealing with the golf course ordinance change, we had the first reading and the second reading. When we did the, the change to the alcohol ordinance, first and second reading. This would keep us, if council were so inclined, to be able to do those things in one night, rather than have to do it.
Thank you, maybe.
Correct.
Or. Okay. I just didn't understand.
Sorry, we'll talk about the other.
Okay, do you, do you want to finish with this?
Yeah.
And then?
We do both, when we keep it a motion, y'all need to, y'all will do this, we need a motion to adopt it.
I make a motion to adopt that. One second.
Okay, round motion, second, all in favor. Okay.
All right. The second one we talked about, and, and this is the one where we're going to have to have the legislature take action to amend our charter. We talked about one provision that needed to be removed. When I went back and read all the case law that pertains to this to determine whether there's anything else we need to do, we looked back at our charter. I don't imagine you all have your charter written, so I'm going to walk through this. There's actually at least two provisions that we need to remove from the chart, have the legislature remove from the charter, do what I think you all are talking about doing. The other one is also in section three point oh one. And I want to read through this section to make sure that it's clear what, what the impact of what you are proposing to do would be. Section three point oh one is the organization and personnel portion of your charter. It says the city government should be organized into the department of general government, parks and rec, police department, fire department, department of public works, and planning department, as provided in section three point oh two. Really even further than that, we realize that this is an old charter, because the city no longer has a fire department that's done by the county, and parks and rec are also in the county. Less than until otherwise provided by ordinance, but no such ordinance shall be adopted until after the council has received, heard, and considered the written recommendation of the mayor. The council by such ordinances may establish, abolish, merge, or consolidate offices, positions, or employment, departments, and agencies in the city, and may provide that the same person may fill any number of offices and positions of employment, and may transfer or change the functions and duties of offices, positions of employment, departments, and agencies of the city subject to following acceptance. A, the number and members and authority of the council, as provided in this act, shall not be changed. All officers and employees of the city, except as otherwise specifically provided in this act, shall be appointed and removed by and shall be under the protection and control of the mayor. And C, one that we talked about the other night, the office of the mayor shall not be abolished, or shall his power, as provided in this act, be reduced. And I went back and looked at the cases about the home rule amendments and some of the changes that we talked about, and you all expressed what you wanted to do. I think that A also presents some problems. Let me remind you what it says. The number, members, and numbers, number of members and authority of the council as provided in this act shall not be changed. So what's been discussed is giving the council more involvement in some of the employment-related positions. So we knew that we needed to remove the provision that said that the powers of the mayor's office could not be reduced. But it also appears that we have to have that section A removed, which doesn't look like it says that the power or the authority of the council can be challenged. Whoever, when this charter was adopted, I went and looked at a book that's available to determine this thing. It was adopted in nineteen sixty seven. It was amended once in nineteen sixty nine, and then there's been some state law provisions that have made changes to it over time for internal office and things of that. But whoever wrote this charter, I don't know who the, it may have been Judge McQuarrie, the city attorney, elect sixty. I believe that's the case, I don't know, you, someone did know. Whoever wrote this charter, wrote it with an eye maintaining sure that it would be hard to change this, this the total government, the city state, from stronger to weaker government. So, and it's kind of belting suspenders. So in light of, we'll discuss the work session. I think that there, in addition to there being subsection C of three point oh one, we're also going to have to remove section A, subsection A of three point oh one. And so I have created both of those provisions. Procedurally, what will happen is that because this is, it's not something that you all do, you're basically asking the state legislature to do it. You all pass a resolution, which then, which reads that the city and state's current charter was adopted in nineteen sixty seven. The mayor and council have determined certain provisions of the charter need to be removed by flexibility and circumstances facing the city. Mayor and council consider the matter of two public meetings, meaning the fourth section, last meeting, and this meeting. The proposed changes attached here to it, which is exhibit A, and then there's resolved, resolution language that basically says that you all support, approve these changes, that you direct, that the clerk place the required public ads. There need to be at least one, maybe, you know, maybe two. That the city attorney provide required notice to the Barrow County Board of Commissioners, which is required by statute. And that the proposed changes be available here in the city hall, and also in the office of the Court of Barrow County Superior Court. And that once all that's done, that the proof of that and the correspondence be submitted to the members of the Barrow County local delegation for introduction in the twenty nineteen session of the Georgia General Assembly. So I prepared that resolution, which you all need to decide whether or not you agree with my assessment that we need to remove both subsections A and C, or C. I think that if we go with both, there may be trouble, problems, obstacles in doing this.
If we go with this, if we go with this, would it fall under home rule to determine which positions would be reviewed by the council? That decision hasn't been made yet.
That decision hasn't been made yet. And.
Which case, that's correct.
And all the cases that have been decided that address that particular issue, except for one, that involves county government. County charters and organizational acts are very different than city charter community. There is one city case that doesn't decide the issue, and the charter, in that case, they don't sign the language of the charter. But the changes are going to have to be carefully crafted to follow through the home rule authority. But I think that removing sections A and C, with careful crafting of those provisions, maintain the mayor's role in the employment and personnel matters, they will pass. I promise you they won't get challenged, but they can be crafted so that they stand the best chance of this thing. The only way to be sure is to do a new charter that passes.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, I'm thinking, we can just do what we need to do for the two thousand nineteen legislative session. And then spend, we could probably utilize someone from the ethics committee, I don't know, maybe. We, we still have the fire department, you know, in the old charter which needs to come out. That's just one thing that I noticed that we have. So updating the charter to make sure it meets the needs of, you know, state and its citizens, us as a council, is going to take some time. I don't know where, you know, I know GMA has a, I know they have a model charter, but that doesn't necessarily always plug in and work for us because of our size, our needs, and whatnot. So I don't know if we need to form a ad hoc committee, subcommittee, or.
I think maybe subcommittee council.
What's that?
It needs to be done by the council.
Right.
The way that it, my other city that's done this, and then the city that I began to represent, then after they already done through the process, they basically, the council, that's a committee of the whole meeting, that it wasn't really mayor and council meeting, you all met. They, they met as a committee, had, one city had six public meetings. I think I mentioned this the other night. And public was there, and it was, and it was, it was an open, free-flow type of meeting, and conversation that there were. And after each one of those meetings, drafts were made, change of red lines were produced, and then those were available for the next meeting, and then that, through that process, the council basically came to a consensus as to what they wanted to send in the legislature. But it's worked.
Yeah.
The first, the first two of those meetings lasted three hours. And then, as, after the first couple, when it was clear, kind of was the general contour from them being, they were simply talking about some of the minutia, the meetings got much better.
Yes. Well, I'm, I'm willing to do the work, but I'm sure everybody's in agreement that the charter needs to be brought, you know, into the twenty-first century, and we need to pay attention to what's, what's in it, what it's doing, and look at the future. You know, our growth, our projected growth, what, you know, what our population's going to be, what our estimated tax revenue base is going to be in ten years, because this isn't something we just, we just do. um, we just do. It's something that's well thought out and will, you know. The, the procedures would be guided by the city attorney exactly.
Um, the, I'll be honest with you, when Hushkin did it, um, the first couple meetings, when they were just trying to decide that they wanted, um, the, we weren't there, and they, they wanted, they wanted to get, and they, and they started with the model, um, and at the end of the, at the end of the process, what they wound up with was pretty much the model with, um, a couple of changes, the various things that Hushkin needed to address in terms of the financial matters, um, this quorum requirement that we talked about, they changed. They, and when that process started, they had six council members, and they would have our kind of individual ones, they would, they reduced their size of their city council to four council members. Um, so, those kind of things, but, and there's some a little bit smaller than the other, but the model, model worked well for them. There's, there's some kind of pick and choose, check the box thing in there, where for larger cities, um, there's some provisions that may not necessarily be perfect for the smaller counties.
Right.
So, city attorney can, city attorney's the one that's got to do all the finalization and send it to the legislative council, um, but my, the city attorney's involvement in the process, I'm fully, uh, thoroughly happy.
I mean, I would like to see us proceed, but I mean, I'm not with it down, you know, down the road, like say it's going to be, uh, one or two public hearings along with our council meetings. I mean, I don't mind needing, I'm just saying it's just, it's not going to be a simple task at all. And, um, I would, you know, uh, I would like to see, you know, at least start talking about it seriously.
What, what I would recommend, you know, a couple of comments that I've made to turn off, if they discuss, over the next couple of the model, GMA did that model, it was basically something that fit most cities in the state of Georgia, from the smaller ones to the larger, mid-sized ones, say like a, um, John Creek or, um, Littlewood or something like that, if not necessarily happens, which that's the colonial government now, but they're laying up, um, some of them, all, all being some of the larger cities. Um, but, you know, my recommendation would be, you know, your spare time over the next couple of months, um, if, if you don't have access to the internet, you can turn, um, right down, you can print out that model charter in your boxes, and let's see some of the revisions, and see what, see what you think. You know, that's a, that's a good starting point, and it's something that's available to everybody, because everybody is not, not behind a firewall on the website, anybody.
Is it on, it's on GMA's website?
Yeah, GMA, yeah, it's in the, not net, if you, if you Google Georgia National Association, you get it from.
Mr. Chan, would you arrange for it to be printed out in our office?
Yeah, I can do that.
But the immediate question for you tonight is whether or not you want to make these new changes, or ask the legislature to make these new changes, and give yourselves some flexibility over the next year to do some of those things that you all discussed, you couldn't even do.
Well, I'd want it done in 2019, would you? I mean, I'm, I'm in agreement with what, with what you have proposed. I don't know, I mean, we, we need a motion?
Need a motion to adopt a resolution presented by the city attorney. Um, there are, your local delegation likes for, um, to have a resolution that's signed by all the elected officials, and when they do this, they'll give a different letter saying, "City Attorney says." So, I prepared that resolution, so a motion, and then a vote, and then you all, before you make it up and sign this, if that's what you want.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion if we adopt the resolution pertaining to the city's charter, section, particularly section 301, subsections A and C, with the modifications needed to get into the 19 legislative.
All in favor? Thank you.
Uh, moving on to, um, the last item, the 40 day rate, so please, Chief Johnson, tell me, elaborate. Chief, you're up.
Like we talked about in the previous meeting, um, it's not really a change, anything, one way, it is a change from the software company that produces the reporting system between Allen and Portware. Currently, we're in the Portware, and we have a contract also with Gold Shield for our GCIC. Um, Allen has their own GCIC and its integrated, that system. It also prevents us from having to have two separate accounts, one for the reporting, one for the GCIC, it all falls under the, and, uh, basically I'm just looking to get your approval.
And this is actually reducing costs?
It does, it reduces costs. Um, what we currently pay for portware is a fee of $15 a citation we earn. Um, some months, that's $500, $600, $700, some months it may be more than that a lot. Uh, this is a safe fee of $435 per month, no matter how many citations you write. So, um, it does, it's not a, not a citation-based fee of something like that. And as far as the taser, the X-26 that we currently carry is obsolete, they don't make it anymore, and there are no parts for replacement. Um, the taser that replaces it, the X-26P, and the X-26P and the other smart weapons have a feature in the battery pack now that when they're energized or turned on, it automatically activates the body cam, and it's called PPM, um, smart active. And it, those type things can also be put on the holster of the firearm, and it will do the same thing. When the weapon's drawn, it will turn the body cameras on. So, um, it requires another contract to be signed, and I didn't want to go forward with another contract without the judge's approval.
And this also, if I remember correctly, was a reduction in cost for section?
On, on the reporting system, that's correct. Uh, the price for the five-year contract like we had before with the X-26, it's, it's gone up in price some, not much, but it's spread out over a five-year period, it's like $1,400 a year for the taser.
Are we giving this a one-year discount by 88? Is this per, per officer, or is this per taser?
No, that's, that's total. They basically gave us a discount because we have the taser and the Axon body cams. And we also used the Axon to play out the store, to store the video.
I didn't see the front, but.
Yes, you're right.
So, they'd like you to use their equipment?
Well, yeah, there's nothing interchangeable with any other companies right now, taser leaves to market, and our Axon does, and both the body cam and, uh, and the CB does right now. Um, so there's not really that much to pick from that has been tested as intent to re-inferently as, as they have.
Okay, we have more questions?
Last question, finally. Um, one would be approximately how many citations do you write in a year? And the other one is, when was the previous server bought, what year?
The previous server was bought before I came here, um, which was, I came here in 2011. Uh, that was under Chief Martin, I believe. Um, it may have been under Chief Tripp, I'm not exactly sure as far as the server, but I don't look to purchase another server.
And so approximately how many, um, citations does the department write in one year?
Anywhere from 750 to 1,000.
Okay.
I make a motion if we authorize the chief to make those purchases.
Second, Brad.
And motion, second. All in favor? Thank you.
Um, next item, citizens' concerns, state business association, way hassle, battle forever vows. I don't think he's here to, not, he has to be put on agenda, but.
We, we're not, we're not, now, now you, when I'm with, it's something we just don't like to work, working along with.
Y'all make, y'all make with him?
Do we have any, what, executive session?
No, ladies. Okay, we're on motion, we adjourn. Why don't you have it?
How are you?
You know, you want to make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. All in favor? Thank you. I'll do my thing.
Yeah, I'm curious myself, I don't know.
Well, it makes sense, mine, I worry.
Questions?
We, we, I, I found my copy of the trial, and I had looked at it.
I'm pretty sure that works. I didn't try it, I didn't have it, but it's, I don't understand. Pouring water.
I don't have, I don't have a written ready.
I'll leave.
They, they got that down.
I said, I have.
I can't feel it.
Right here, there.
She said she did.
I've got enough of the bags in the front door.
How are you doing?
Good.
Hey, how you doing?
And I don't know how they do it, but they do it.
We have to do.
We're going to come in.
What are you, everybody?
You have, this man here, probably, we got him.
And it, or it's like, yes.
We have, we have, actually, we don't, we don't, we work, we, we just.
Always lead the way, we work.
So that, that I'm allowed by the board, more or less, property is still water.
Uh, truthfully, uh, well, these would, we, the other, that was my topic, is with, uh, people, and, uh, it's just something, well, I mean, I'm, this, 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 it's something, you know, talk about you.
And once they're.
City of, I don't, the users, they all, they depend on, or a property, with one different room, and, 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 yeah.
Are your own friends, probably, last year.
Yeah, well, that's, now, now, spot, spot, this stuff, you know.